Welcome to the Tuesday, October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by a roll call vote. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, the United States of America, to the Republic, for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we will start with correspondence. I will give it over to Nicole.
Hello, all right, the correspondence for this week, the school committee received the following. A letter from the Town Finance Committee dated October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one regarding budget preparations for FY twenty-three. And an emailed note from Mr. Jeremy Dugan dated October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one regarding reassessing the mask mandate in the schools.
Thank you, Nicole. Um, I know that Mary is here and she's working very hard to get herself logged in. Any progress on that, Mary?
So, working on that shutdown.
Okay. Okay. Well, we have the very non-controversial topic of approval of minutes next, so we may just proceed to that.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one school committee meeting as presented.
We have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? And I see that Mary is ready to join us. Excellent. All right, seeing no discussion, we will move to a vote. Uh, Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And yes for me. All right, next item, visitor comments. Do we have any visitors who would like to make a comment? Seeing none, we will move on. Next up is school committee announcements and recognitions. Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. I am just super excited to share uh that the Long Meadow Robotics Team has been up and running for the past couple of weeks. This is their fifth season at the high school. The first two seasons, they were invited to the national championships. And the second and third season, sorry, the third and fourth season were um mixed up by the pandemic. They were able to do some really cool building of uh remote race cars. And we're out on the track last spring, racing those race cars. It was very exciting and very cool. Uh, but they have definitely been up and running. There's about thirty students who have been uh going two times a week and they're having a blast. So check out longmeadow.org when you have a chance or go on the Facebook page. And um just check out the exciting things that they're doing. And I would just like to appreciate the uh the students who have been participating, the families who are encouraging them, and the mentors who are spending uh a lot of time just kind of uh having fun with them and and helping them figure out all sorts of different things, not just related to robotics, but some life skills as well. So great job, Long Meadow Robotics.
Thank you very much, Gianna. Nicole?
I wanted to extend a congratulations and good luck to all of our um athletic teams who made their way to the Western Mass Tournament. Um, the boys and girls varsity soccer teams, girls volleyball, girls field hockey, boys and girls cross country, and boys and girls golf. Congratulations to all of you and best of luck in your upcoming games.
Absolutely. Thank you, Nicole. Anyone else? Mary, go ahead.
Thank you to Long Meadow High School teachers for a great night of family conferences. Um, and I would also like to thank the Long Meadow High School PAC. We had a great meeting today. Some highlights of topics included a presentation by guidance. Um, Marty attended the meeting and gave some updates about our middle schools. Uh, we received a sports update and um some general high school updates. So it's always wonderful to see um parents who are involved um in PAC. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mary. Anything else? All right, we do not have business with guests and we are already on to administrative reports, so I will turn it over to Marty.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, use this as a my superintendent's report as an opportunity to uh share uh some health and safety related information with the committee. Uh, it's information that's in your packet, but I'll just do a a quick screen share so folks at home can can follow along. What you're seeing here uh is a tracking of our active cases and students in quarantine. And so you'll see that uh we have recently experienced a bit of an uptick in terms of the number of students who are a number of active cases that we're tracking and the number of students in quarantine. I think a- as of yesterday, we had uh eight students, eight active uh student cases uh in in a smaller number actually of of students in quarantine. So, you know, it's obviously a a another good time to remind us of all of our, you know, the importance of vigilance to all the uh mitigating strategies that we have in place. Uh, pleased to report that uh test and stay is not only up and running, but very, very active. Uh, we had a sort of a slow start to begin with because there wasn't a pressing need and we're kind of getting used to the protocols and orienting families and staff to the to the diagnostic testing program. Let's just check in some numbers earlier this afternoon. Um, since October eighteenth, I think it's Monday the eighteenth, if I have the dates right. Uh, we have administered about hundred and sixty rapid by next now tests through the diagnostic testing program. Uh, and we've it's been only two positive tests that come have come from that. So that diagnostic program is is working as we had hoped and it's an opportunity for um staff or students, if they're symptomatic, to uh check in with our testers. And it's also an opportunity to allow students who are identified as um in close contacts to the opportunity to remain in school if they successfully uh receive a negative test five days in a row. So uh it's it's uh it's working as we had hoped. Uh, we did, you know, have, uh, the committee is well aware of the uh couple of challenging cases that we've experienced recently. We're seeing more activity uh in our elementary schools than at our middle and high schools, and I suppose that's to be expected given the um, given that our elementary students aren't eligible for vaccination at this point. Uh, but you know, if uh I'd say the the limited number of cases that we've seen at the high schools is a frankly a reflection of the level of vaccination that that we're seeing among our high school students, and I'll share some information with you on that on that shortly. Uh, but but certainly, you know, uh uh an important time to remind everybody of the importance of of, you know, staff and families, all of us adhering to all the strategies that we know uh work. And so um, I know that uh, well, let me just sort of a- advance this slide a little bit here. The committee had asked for some specific information on where we stood with regard to um reported uh evidence of vaccination among staff and students. So this chart on the left, it tells us the percentage of staff who have submitted evidence of vaccination to HR. Uh, again, this is, this is a staff submit on a voluntary basis. The incentive for them to submit is so that they can avoid having to uh quarantine. They would be exempt from quarantining if they're a close contact and if they have submitted evidence of vaccination. So we're seeing that number sort of gradually creep up. I think it's it's definitely reasonable to conclude that the actual level of staff vaccination is is significantly higher than what we're seeing here. Uh, and then on the right is the percentage of students that are reported as being vaccinated uh from evidence gathered from the immunization, the state immunization database. That's the M I I S database. So you'll see at the high school, uh seventy-five point eight five percent of the nine hundred and eleven students uh have are showing up in that database as being fully vaccinated. In fact, I learned today that the number has crept up to around to just over seventy-seven percent. So just over seventy-seven percent of our high school students uh are in fact vaccinated. And again, thi- this number, this this vac- the vaccination levels that you're seeing here for students uh comes from that immunization database, which is different than some other information that is publicly available, and that is the uh from the DPH databases, a publicly available dashboard uh that we've shown at at this committee meeting many, many times, but among twelve to fifteen year olds in that M D D H database, eighty-three percent of Long Meadow children are reported as being vaccinated. And in the sixteen to nineteen year old uh age span, eighty-two percent of students are reported as being vaccinated. So um, it's it's just, there's a understandable discrepancy because as we've talked about before, the uh the there are students that have been vaccinated that perhaps aren't showing up in the immunization database. And alternatively, there are students that are reported in in this data, the M D P H data that perhaps are not Long Meadow Public School students. They've graduated or or they attend private school. But when we do the deep dive and we drill down to the sort of student by student level, uh and thank you to Nurse Gartman or Nurse Leader for doing this for us. Uh, this is what we're seeing at the at the uh elementary, at the high school and middle school level. Obviously, the the middle school percentages are pulled down because there are most of it, many of our sixth graders are not eligible for vaccination just yet. So um, if we if we were to look at seventh and eighth graders, it's it's over seventy percent of our seventh and eighth graders are um generally speaking are have been vaccinated. So I I present this information to you because I know that um, as as you're aware, uh DESI has this sort of off-ramp provision in its mask mandate that would allow um districts to make an individual, a a school by school choice if we can attest to eighty percent of the individuals in the building as being vaccinated. Now, that's all, that's all moot so long as the local Board of Health order is in place. Uh, but if that were ever to be lifted and if, as well, if if the committee wanted to uh consider accessing that eighty percent off-ramp, this this might be some of the data that we would look at. This is what I would want to lean on if we had to attest to that eighty percent vaccination level. So, side note, the, as as I think the committee is aware, but perhaps maybe some folks watching are not aware, just today, the um Jeff Riley, Commissioner, Mass Commissioner of Education, announced that they were extending, DESI was extending its mask mandate to January fifteenth. Uh, the the eighty percent off-ramp provision would still be in place for districts that can attest to it and choose to access it, but um, that that DESI mask mandate is has been extended to the fifteenth. So this is just some of the, some of the numbers that we're tracking. Um, and you know, being attentive to, I think I know this committee has made it clear to the community that we want to sort of continually commit to reviewing the mask policy. And so hopefully this is some information that might be helpful to you in that in that ongoing review. Uh, but it looks like at least through January fifteenth, uh, the mask mandate would be in place from DESI. Tonight, the Board of Health is meeting. Uh, I don't know if they will take any action on the local mask order. Uh, but I'd say they're meeting as we speak right now. So I'll stop there. Uh, but a few other things to report on, but but uh I know this has always been a, this has sort of been at the top of the agenda for over a year now, a lot of our health and safety data, and and I know it's important to the committee, so uh I'll stop if you have any questions. I'm happy to take a shot at answering those.
Questions for Marty. Uh, I think I see Bronwyn's hand up.
Thank you. Um, Marty, I was just curious. You said that um you think the number of teachers vaccinated is significantly higher than the percentages on the screen. Um, I was just wondering if um, if you know why if it's significantly higher, why maybe they haven't turned something in or?
Yeah, hard hard to say. Uh, it could just be, it could be a variety of reasons why folks haven't submitted evidence of of vaccination. My my belief that the levels are higher than what we're seeing here is really uh based on anecdotal evidence and conversations with principals and teachers and our our general sense that the vaccination levels go well beyond what staff have voluntarily reported. Um, so I I know Principal Landers put out another reminder to his staff today, uh telling them that they uh could, if they chose, um submit evidence of vaccination to the to the HR. So I think these numbers have gradually been 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 trending upward. Uh, it could just be one of those things that um, you know, people just haven't, it's it's not a priority, I suppose, unless it becomes some sort of requirement. So we don't require vaccination of our employees. If we ever did, of course, then we we'd have a clearer understanding of 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 the situation. So I think Bronwyn's mostly just our our understanding anecdotally of of what the vaccination levels are likely to be out there.
But basically, I mean, you don't know for sure. So this is the data we're going by? That we, uh, forty-four at Blueberry, fifty, forty-six at Wolf Swamp. Um, I'm not sure what the average is. Um, I thought it would be higher. Um, I know you said you think it's significantly higher, but technically, these are the numbers that we have data-wise. This is what we have to go by. Right?
Correct. I guess I I I think if we ever got to that crossroad where, let's say, the committee wanted to make a decision on the uh, we're tied into that eighty percent threshold, then I suspect we we might get more of a response. But at this point, it is their sort of confidential health information that they're not required to turn over to HR at this point. So you're right. And you know, we can only go by uh what we know with certainty. This is what we know with certainty. Uh, but you're 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 spot on that.
So we have to just assume that these numbers are accurate until we receive information otherwise.
Can can I just jump in, Marty? Because Bronwyn, the way that I look at it is that is the floor. Right? We know that there are this many people. This is the minimum of people vaccinated.
Right.
And my assumption is it's higher, but I agree with you. We can't do our calculation of getting to a certain percentage, assuming people are higher.
Right.
Um, I also think it it might be useful, Marty, if you could talk about, uh, you know, maybe Hopkinton or some of the schools who have submitted, because I think this sort of gets at Bronwyn's question. Um, so if if you don't mind, Marty, maybe speak into that.
So Hopkinton was the uh the first district that attested to its high school reaching that eighty percent threshold. And I had gone on to the NASDPH website to see what their vaccination levels were. And in the in the sixteen to nineteen year old band, they were above ninety-five percent. Uh, I had an opportunity to to talk to the superintendent in Hopkinton and um she had said that because the vaccination levels among students were so high that essentially the math was was easy to attest to that eighty percent level. So, you know, we'll we'll keep um, giving staff the opportunity to submit evidence of vaccination, and we'll keep drilling down into that database. Uh, each day, it it sort of ticks up. Again, the problem with the database is that there are some providers that aren't entering information into it, or perhaps there are uh some uh some individuals who are not consenting to have their information submitted to that database. But uh yeah, in in the case of Hopkins, in that it their their vaccination levels were were above ninety-five percent as reported by that NASDPH um dashboard. And then Ashland was the second community that I had seen, and it was the same thing. They were above ninety-five percent. I I believe I saw a a media report that said there were twenty schools across the state that have submitted evidence of being above eighty percent.
Can we ask a follow-up here?
Yeah, go for it, Bronwyn.
Um, so hopefully the um percentage will keep going upwards with the staff. Um, I remember last year there was a lot of staff members that's, you know, that said they didn't want it to be less than six feet unless they were fully vaccinated. So that's why it's a little bit like when I look at it, I'm like, whoa, you know, that doesn't really match up for me with what um, you know, the teachers were um were saying, which I understood when they were saying that last year, and I think we did. You know, they were um got to, you know, moved up to an earlier opportunity, which was uh the right thing to do. I was glad that that happened. So um hopefully the numbers are are higher than what we see.
Other comments, questions? Suzie, go ahead.
Yeah, that um, that was my wondering too, just to, you know, kind of jump on what Bronwyn said. I mean, not only was there a plea from, you know, folks to maintain the six foot, it, you know, um, if there was no vaccination or you know, if people weren't vaccinated, but also I think there was, um, you know, I know it was difficult to get a vaccination last year, and we had some significant um challenges with getting people covered to get vaccinations. So I guess I'm just a little surprised by the numbers um because of that. And I'm surprised with an incentive in place um that there wouldn't be, you know, more uh submitted. So um, it's it's a little, just just a slightly concerning in my mind.
I I think just, I'll I'll give a a response to that, which is, I don't think there currently is an incentive because the Board of Health has said that everybody has to wear a mask. Right? So I think until the Board of Health says that there's even the possibility that we can make a decision, I could see some teachers saying like, what's the point? So I I don't know. That's just speculation.
And I'm sorry, Kevin. What I was referring to was um Dr. O'Shea mentioned the um the incentive to avoid quarantine if you submitted vaccination information, if you're i- if you're found to be a close contact. Um, so that's that's what I was referring to. Granted, we, you know, that's that would not be by, you know, general standards an incentive, but it is an incentive, you know, nonetheless. Um, love to add more incentives to that, but uh I think just in general, I think it's it's concerning. I think it's concerning also in the context of what, you know, we're seeing take place um with just the cases spiking a little bit in some of the schools where there's a low vaccination rate on the part of the staff.
Yeah, good point. Thank you, Suzie. Other comments, questions? So I I have a a couple. Oh, I'm s- I'm sorry. I think I I think that my computer is very slow. I should probably just look around the room. So Gianna, go ahead.
Bronwyn, do you want to go first? Because I didn't know if you had a follow-up to that line of questioning.
No, no, go ahead. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Bronwyn. Thanks, Kevin. I just wanted to um thank the uh, you know, superintendent and administrators, but uh especially the the health and medical staff within the uh schools and within the town. Um, as I've mentioned before, I work in a school and I see how hard our um school nurse is working every day. I see how hard um we have school nurses and and medical staff that come in um and support her with the systems and the processes that we have in place, similar to those here in Long Meadow. Um, I work very closely with her, so I I know the significant amount of time and effort and dedication and just being able to keep up with the numbers and the tracking and and everything that goes along with it. Um, our main office staff as well, which I'm sure is is the same here with attendance and tracking of, is it COVID-related? Is it quarantine? Is it, you know, just a regular old cold? Um, so I just wanted to to specifically say thank you to all of the people that are working behind the scenes that can give us these numbers and these uh data charts.
Yeah, thank you, Gina. I know that you speak for all of us when you say that, so thank you very much. Bronwyn, go ahead.
All right, he just put that um thing back up on the screen for a second. Is it possible to see the number of students on the right-hand side in that chart below it as at the same time or no?
Yeah, I think so.
Or maybe not. I think uh, what was it like? Okay, so so this has been happening since the summer. And I'm just wondering how how we go about figuring out exactly what the number is. Because it's a, it's I mean, eighty-three and like seventy-seven aren't too far apart, but some of those kids are in middle school. So you said the fifty percent um obviously, because some of the sixth graders can't get vaccinated yet. That makes sense, but if you look at the twelve fifteen as eighty-three, I just feel like since the summer, we've been discussing that these two numbers are different. And I'm wondering how we get what the actual number is. Like, we know which kids are at private school. We know which kids don't go to Long Meadow High School anymore. So I'm wondering, um, I mean, in the event, and and who knows when this may or may not happen, but in the event that um, the Board of Health li- lists the mask mandate um for those who are vaccinated in the schools, uh, I I feel like I want to be ready. And I want to have like exact numbers. And the nurses' numbers versus the DPH numbers don't line up, which I understand why. The nurses, that's that's all they have the access to. And then the DPH might not be accurate because some of the students might not be students here anymore. So is there a way of figuring out which students aren't students here anymore? So we could have just one percentage?
The um, sure, the the numbers, so the numbers appear to be converging. Um, and I'd say that they're both actual numbers. They're 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 the numbers you're seeing from the M I D, M I I S database are are the actual numbers that are reported. Our nurse leader went through and on a student by student by student basis is the actual numbers of actual students that are showing up in the M I, M I I S database. And then down below is the actual numbers of of Long Meadow students that's being reported out by NASTDPH. They are converging, and I can tell you that our nurses are, because they want accurate records too, that they're regularly calling families uh to confirm. So there's there's families that they know that have verbally said, yes, my child's vaccinated, but a nurse will say, well, it's not showing up in the in the database. So I know Nurse Jason at the high school, and actually, I think she called forty families over the last couple of weeks to say, I'm only seeing evidence, I'm not seeing evidence of vaccination, or I'm only seeing evidence of of one shot. Can you tell me exactly what it is? And and so that, you know, that has helped us with our understanding of of what the what the actual levels of of vaccinated students are. So the numbers are definitely converging. Um, and, you know, it this is, this is, I I can't, this is like, I'm not sure what I can, what I could.
So which numbers would be turned into the state? Because it looked like the one that I saw in the newspaper from Hopkinton. It was the one, like, the one on the bottom.
Yeah, the um.
If we had to do that, which one are we, would we turn in?
I think I would seek direction from the committee on that. So the way you can, you can attest to the eighty percent in a variety of ways. You can attest to the eighty percent by doing the deep dive into the M I I S database. You could even attest to the eighty percent if by um asking families to voluntarily simply disclose without necessarily requiring documented evidence. In other words, we could, we could ask families, say, you know, is your child vaccinated or not? And so that's another way that you can attest to that eighty percent level. Um, I think, you know, as we get, as we get closer to the time where the decision is even possible, you know, perhaps the committee would have some direction on how you'd like to, you know, what metric you'd like to follow and and what metric we think is the most reliable. I like the M I I S database because it it is student by student by student. It's it's it it's the most granular data that we have. And it's something that we can continually review. Like, you know, Nurse Gartman said to me that each time she refreshes, literally refreshes the database, you know, it it ticks up a little bit more. So there's more evidence of a, of another docu, of another vaccinated student in that database. So I think it's it's going to come down to how we choose to attest to that eighty percent threshold again. You know, when the time comes and it for the foreseeable future, you know, we at least through January, it it's nothing that we will, well, I shouldn't say that. It really depends.
We don't know that.
Depends on the Board of Health order. Yeah, yeah.
So maybe we should start the deep dive, just I feel like we should just have accurate numbers anyways. Um.
I want to, I want to just, this is accurate. These these numbers are.
So the top numbers are accurate, the bottom numbers.
They're both accurate.
They're both accurate. Okay.
They're both accurate. They just are, they're just compiling the the immunization levels in different ways. The top bit, the top chart is again, student by student records of what appears in the immunization database. The bottom is what DPH collects uh through whatever means it's collecting. I I, you know, I could probably try to understand that a little bit further, but I I want to I would characterize both as accurate. It's just collected differently. They're never going to be the same because in that sixteen to nineteen-year-old band are graduates or students that are not, as you pointed out, Bronwyn, students that are not part of Long Meadow Public Schools. So they'll they'll never be identical.
Uh, let's go over to Gianna.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, I I don't want to oversimplify this, but there's and I know some people have touched on it, but I just want to make it very clear. I know that we're supposed to be focusing on the numbers and we want them to be accurate and, you know, that the numbers are important. There is a huge variable that I just want to again reiterate, and it's human nature. Some people just don't like to share their personal information. Some people don't like to share the personal information about their children. They just don't want their information or their children to be a number in a system. Um, that's just human nature for some people, and that's a very real variable when we're looking at these numbers. So, you know, we could talk about digging deeper and, y- you know, analyzing this or that. Um, it would be very difficult to put a number on a number of people who just simply don't want to share their information. And that's a legitimate response, and that's, you know, very real to them. Um, so I just think we need to keep that in mind as well.
Yeah, thank you for that, Gina. I'll push back a little bit on that, because if you want to enroll in Long Meadow Public Schools, you have to prove that your kid is vaccinated. Not against COVID nineteen, but you have to share personal information if you want to enroll in a public school. So I think we need to remember that, too. Um, Marty, just a a couple of things from my perspective. How many staff are there at LHS?
I would say somewhere around maybe a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty, I think, are showing up on the on the roster. I'd have to consider the exact number, but it's probably in that range.
All right, so maybe we can ballpark it at a hundred and thirty-five.
Sure, yeah.
Right? So, all right, if we do quick math, that means we have like a thousand fifty people approximately at LHS. Right? So that means we need eight hundred and thirty-seven to be vaccinated. Right? So that would be our magic number if we want to hit the eighty percent. Right now, we have seven hundred and two students who are vaccinated. Right?
Yeah.
And if we go by the percent you just gave us for staff, we have seventy-six staff vaccinated. Right? So right now, we're at seven hundred and seventy-eight people who are vaccinated. So we need another sixty people to get vaccinated for us to be at eighty percent. Right? So I mean, I think it's important for people to hear actual numbers and not just percentages. So that means that if a whole bunch more staff are vaccinated and they tell us that, we're really close to that eighty percent. It also means that if we've got a whole bunch of students who are vaccinated, but we don't know about it, we also are really close to the eighty percent. So
Yeah.
Anyway, I just think it's important to look at actual numbers and not just percentages.
That was uh, Mr. Maz and I were talking today at the, in the Long Meadow High Cafeteria. That was my sort of back-of-the-envelope calculation. I was in that close to seventy was the number that 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 I was thinking we would need to pass that eighty percent threshold. So I think if we that, if we hit that, we might not we might not need to we we won't have to require people to um submit evidence of vaccination, perhaps staff, that we could naturally hit that, that eighty percent number using the approach that you just described.
Gianna, go ahead.
I just want to remind people, and I've said this before, and and um, I just want to say it again. We're spending a lot of time focusing on this eighty percent number. Um, it is one aspect of the much bigger picture of, you know, making a decision regarding, you know, the next step. So I just want to remind everybody, we're spending a lot of time working at the eighty percent and trying to get to it and think about it. Uh, it's just one piece of the puzzle.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point, Gianna. And I think the the key thing to remind everybody of, until we hit eighty percent, we have no flexibility. Once we hit eighty percent, if there's still a mandate from the Board of Health, there's no flexibility about masks. There could be flexibility about how close kids are and things like that. So yeah, I think there's, I think it's a good point to remind folks that we have a bunch of variables going on. Bronwyn, go ahead.
Uh, there definitely are variables, but there's one, one thing is black and white that Desi has set forth, and that's the eighty percent. So no matter what other variables we bring into it, um, if if we got to the eighty percent at some point, if the Board of Health said, uh, you know, we're, we're ready for the, for a change. You know, I feel like I want to be in a position as a school committee to also be ready for that change. So um, it seems like the Board of Health is definitely looking at all the other variables. Um, but it seems like the one that, you know, we maybe I thought we would be focusing on would be just, and Kevin says that, you know, every, the end of every meeting, um, you know, please get vaccinated. So I guess that's the the message uh for people to to can you continue to get vaccinated, so that if we do get to the eighty percent, it gives people choice if the Board of Health decides to roll back um some of their requirements, which may or may not happen. But at least we'll know exactly where we stand if they do do that.
Yeah, thank you, Bronwyn. And, you know, the other thing that that I would say in relation to that is is what Marty sort of brought up at the the front of his presentation, which is that we're seeing very little positive cases, very few positive cases in the high school. We're seeing more in the elementary schools. And and again, we we think that that's because of the vaccination rates. I mean, that seems to be the only difference. And we're also seeing very little school transmission. So a lot of this is coming in from the outside, and we're seeing very few high school students and staff bringing COVID in from the outside, which again, I think is really good evidence that the vaccination is working and doing what we want it to do and keeping COVID out of the schools where vaccination's possible. All right, um, are we okay for Marty to continue on? Okay.
Uh, just a couple more items. Um, as Kane mentioned earlier, that I had a chance to um, meet with the Long Meadow High School PAC. And we talked about middle school facility needs and the school committee's statement of interest to the MSBA. And sort of that is sort of going to kick off, uh, what I hope will be some other opportunities, public opportunities to uh talk to the community about uh the needs of our middle schools and where things stand with the statement of interest and what the possibilities might be. So uh, you can be on the lookout for announcement of a couple of public forums, perhaps, maybe one virtual, maybe one in person uh to keep the community engaged on that important project. And then um, I'd also uh mention, uh, we had posted to the district website a revised district curriculum accommodation plan, if the committee wants to check that out. Uh, the D cap, as it's more commonly known, it's really documents our efforts to ensure that we are meeting the needs of students. Um, the diverse needs of students in a general education setting uh as much as possible. Um, we have launched with, um, we're ready to launch with paper. This is the uh, the tutoring service that the school committee had approved uh a few weeks back. Looking at a potential November fifteenth launch date. All the student rosters have been loaded and we are getting ready to do some education of the administration and of families on that service. Um, also mentioned, um, just not on on the written report, but the um Blueberry Hill uh uh was a a topic of many emails that you've seen, the, some of the COVID cases that we had uh dealt with there. And, you know, we, last year, we talked about um that we were committed to not seeing in-school transmission. I think the, you know, the truth is that in this situation, we can't necessarily rule out the possibility of in-school transmission in the in the Blueberry Hill COVID cases that you've seen some emails on. Uh, so it really just, you know, causes us to, again, sort of make sure that we are being attentive to all the mitigation strategies, to making sure that the diagnostic testing program is firmly in place. Uh, and to make sure that we're being attentive to masking and distancing and and all those other things. So uh, we were trying to be as sort of uh transparent as we possibly can with the Blueberry Hill community on 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 that situation. And I would want this committee and the community to know that when we uh have, you know, some um uptick uh in a particular school or in a particular classroom, uh, we are quick to reach out to uh epidemiologists at NASTDPH. We are uh, we have a direct line to um senior staff at the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So uh, we we review very, very closely our local uh situation with uh the folks who have a good handle on this at the state level and and we seek their their guidance and advice. And of course, obviously, the our own local health officials as well. So um, so I appreciate, uh, you know, everyone's uh, uh, understanding and patience with that and and know that, you know, we we remain committed to uh eliminating uh any opportunity for in-school transmission, uh using all the the mitigation strategies that we have in place. I think the diagnostic testing program has been uh very, very helpful. I think, you know, it's our elementary students have had some quick experience with that. And, you know, I think most elementary students are used to going to the doctor with mom or dad or a caregiver. Uh, and so we've tried to, where we can, we've tried to allow parents to be sort of uh witness to that diagnostic testing program so that they have the comfort level they need to uh have their kids continue to participate in that so that they can uh test and stay if if they happen to be a close contact. Uh, we have really broadened, expanded our use of that diagnostic testing program. Uh, in in the Blueberry case, we opened it up to um the, to a, the children uh in in one whole classroom. And so that also was repeated at Center School uh today as well. So um, that's been an asset to us and and, you know, our principals are doing a great job messaging and um communicating to staff about uh the importance of all the mitigation strategies that uh have worked so well for us. So can I make questions on that? Happy to do my best.
Suzie, go ahead.
No question, really, just a comment. So um, I was going to bring this up before, but I wanted you to talk first. Um, I went to the P, the Blueberry PTO meeting this past week and uh there was a um, you know, there there's definitely some, I think, it it's hard for parents because they hear, you know, they get these generic emails and it says at the end, you know, towards the end, you know, clo- close clo- close contacts have been notified in a separate notification. But there's just this, you know, I, I think there's a level of like wanting to know more. Um, even if you're not a close contact and some misunderstanding around, if you're a close contact, you're getting a phone call, you're, you're talking with someone directly. Um, and I think, uh, I, I just have to say, I think, um, it's, it's been handled very well, um, at Blueberry. I think it's, it's been obviously a challenge and it's all new and, and, and difficult and takes your eye away. I can't even imagine the amount of hours that you spend, you know, given all of the communication that you've been able to get out and having to, you know, talk with every single parent individually. But, um, I just wanted to share that I think that, and, and highlight that if your child's not a close contact, number one, that's a good thing. And you won't, the, the close contacts have to be really the focus of the communication. Um, the other information is just for everybody generally to know. So I think it's important to, to differentiate those, those pieces for sure.
Yeah, well said. I, I, I think you characterized the, the approach well. We, we have the broadcast email, that's information from everybody. And then as, as people are, are more tied into the situation, the communication becomes more and more specific. So I appreciate you recognizing that, yeah.
Other comments or questions for Marty? Uh, I think I, I would just like to, to follow up on what Suzie said, which is, you know, we know how hard you're working and your team is working and, and we want to thank you for that work, but also for moving the ball forward on a bunch of other things. So, um, you know, I think it's really reassuring to us and the community to see that you're moving ahead with these middle school discussions. And, you know, we're doing other things. So thank you for keeping all that stuff going in what is a really challenging time.
Believe the team effort all the way around, yeah.
If it's all right, oh, Bronwyn, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say that the test and stay has really, um, been huge. I mean, I, it seems Marty, maybe the, if it was last year, the quarantines would be like, maybe in the hundreds or so. And to be able to, you know, allow those kids to stay in school because they are negative, I just think is like, just a huge, huge bonus. And it seems like it's working just like it's supposed to. And like you said, uh, the teamwork is, is making that happen. And just the fact that the kids can, can stay because they are negative and no reason for them to be quarantined at home is, is awesome.
And keeping staff in school, you know, if, if staff have mild symptoms, they have full access to the program as well. So, um, it's, it's typically mild singular symptoms, uh, or a, a singular mild symptom. But yeah, that, it's been very helpful to, uh, help us, you know, continue teaching and learning.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for, for highlighting that, Bronwyn. It is a, it's a huge win. And I know that other states aren't necessarily doing this. So I think, you know, the fact that we're keeping kids and staff in school, it's a, it's a wonderful thing. All right, if it's okay to move on. All right, um, Chair Report, I have a couple of things for everyone. Um, again, I think it's already been said, but I will continue to say, please get vaccinated. Again, we spend a lot of time talking about this. The more folks who are vaccinated and that we know about, the more flexibility we're gonna have as we move down this road. And it looks like the younger kids are gonna have the opportunity to get vaccinated very soon. I want to encourage folks to, to get them vaccinated when it becomes possible. And the more people, staff, students we have vaccinated, the more flexibility we have. All right, some other things that I have on my list. So, um, just a reminder to folks that the town meeting is Tuesday, uh, a week from today. Seven o'clock, um, at the presumably very cold DPW. Uh, so pretend like you're going to Dagan's night football game. Bulk up, bring some hot chocolate. Uh, it's gonna be cold, but, you know, we're New Englanders, we're tough, we can do it. Uh, seven o'clock, DPW, Dwight Road. You can check out the new DPW. Uh, and also, the town just announced they're doing, uh, flu and COVID vaccinations before the meeting. Uh, so if you go on the town website, you can sign up. And I know I signed up to get a flu shot because I haven't gotten one yet. So I encourage you to check that out. Very convenient way to get your flu or COVID shot if you haven't already. And just as a, a note to the community, um, the, the Select Board is, is having conversations about the tax ceiling. And that's happening later this week. Um, so just to let folks know that those conversations are going on. There'll be representation from the school committee there and, and we'll report on it after the meeting. Um, and then the final thing I have is that, as we talked about last time, the Select Board has a racial justice task force. Um, and, you know, that, that I volunteered to be on that. I'll keep folks updated on that. We haven't had a meeting yet, so I don't have anything to update you on, but just to let you know that will be going on. Um, and then the final Select Board related announcement, as we talked last time about changes to the charter. And that's not coming up until the spring town meeting. So, uh, that's not happening in a week from now. It's happening, you know, months from now. So we will make sure to get proposed charter language to the committee. So we can approve it and then send it on to the Select Board, but that's not gonna happen anytime soon. But I just wanted to let folks know about that. Any questions on any of that? All right. So, I am done with my report. So, Dagan, you're on.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, updates. Obviously, we have our women's volleyball team in the gym as we speak, competing for the quarter semifinals. I wish them the best of luck. I cannot hear the cheers quite yet. I hope they win. Second thing, the class of twenty twenty-three is hosting a fundraiser, which will be at, it's Rigios now, Rigios Pizza. Be ten percent off of your order will go to the class of twenty twenty-three. That is my class, so please support. Also, as, as Nicole mentioned, there are, there is many teams at IHS that are win, are winning. Will continue, hopefully will continue to win, champion, going into a champion postseason. So I wish them the best of luck. There's also a key club initiative. They are raising funds for a initiative to help the Haitian citizens in Haiti to get clean, clean water. So that's a great, great thing that they're doing and that has been going on to last month or so. So with that, that is all I have to report. Let me see, athletics, class, clubs. That should be it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dagan. Uh, appreciate you keeping us up to date on what is going on. Uh, Nicole, please.
I'm just wondering, Dave, do you know the date for the fundraiser for class of twenty twenty-three?
Tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you.
It's an easy date to remember, tomorrow. All right, um, other reports. So LPVAC, Mary, go ahead.
Yes, we had a meeting last week. Um, I think one of the biggest announcements to come out of the meeting is that the Director of HR, whose name is Cheryl Wilbly, is retiring after thirty years of service. And she started as a part-time personal secretary and became the head of HR. So it was a very nice, um, celebration, shout out to her and her career. Um, we had some housekeeping type, um, agenda items. I'll just run through them really quick. Um, we approved a CTE, professional development opportunity for a few employees. Uh, we discussed SEI endorsements for teachers at, um, LPVAC. Uh, the board agreed to hire a special ed staff person and additional teacher. Um, if we have referrals committed to increase our enrollment, so it would be contingent upon, um, receiving those referrals and having, uh, students commit to, to coming to the school. Um, and then we would approve the hiring of a new teacher. So that will increase our enrollment. Um, we used to contract with a company called Futures for Para Professionals. And, um, we are no longer going to do so. Um, so actually, they said, uh, Futures has broken up with us. I guess Futures has made some changes and we would like to retain the staff from Futures to have them continue to work for us. Um, so there was a proposed pay scale that was commensurate with, um, what we, it looked at like a two percent increase over the many years, et cetera, et cetera. And we did approve that, um, to be able to, uh, hire these individuals to work for the school. Um, we are gonna discuss a little bit later in the meeting, the idea of sending more freshmen or having a discussion about freshmen, um, at LPVAC, and that came up again in this meeting. Um, and lastly, we did discuss a vacation policy. Ultimately, the motion did not pass. There was, um, you know, a, a, a policy of a potential change to their vacation policy, which would have made the, um, use of vacation time a little bit more restricted and that did not pass. Um, and that's it. So thank you.
Any questions for Mary? All right, thank you, Mary. Um, energy and sustainability, I do have one update for folks. Um, so the, the group is, is very excited to put on, uh, a presentation. Uh, it's a Green and Healthy Communities presentation, um, and that's happening on Saturday from ten to eleven thirty. And it's on Zoom. There's a bunch of presenters from all over the country who are presenting, uh, on green buildings, rainwater harvesting, solar energy, waste management. Um, there's a bunch of very short presentations and then there's gonna be time for Q and A. Uh, and the, the place to get the Zoom link is on the library's website. So it's hosted by the library and co-sponsored by Energy and Sustainability. So I encourage folks to check out the library website. You'll see the details there. Um, again, should be a really interesting presentation. And that's all that I have from energy and sustainability. So I think we are now over to Gianna and Seal.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, yep, just a quick update from Seal. In the, uh, continuing efforts of, you know, diversity, inclusion, awareness and advocacy, I would just encourage you to check out sealma.org. Become acquainted with what they do, their purpose, their mission. And there is a meeting coming up in November, I believe November thirteenth. But again, please just check out sealma.org. If you have a student who, uh, receives special education services or if you don't, the idea is again to make this a community feeling of, again, awareness and advocacy for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Gianna. All right, I think we are on to subcommittee reports. Um, and we have a lot of activity from the finance subcommittee. So Tom Mazza becomes the star of the show.
Thank you, uh, good evening, everyone. Um, Finance Sub met earlier today. Um, there are a number of items on your agenda for consideration. Uh, the one other item that we, uh, discussed was the, we had a preliminary discussion regarding the FY twenty-three budget. Uh, we anticipate that we will be getting a, some information from the town manager in regards to, uh, some directives related to the FY twenty-three budget and the calendar. Uh, we also, uh, did discuss the, uh, letter that the Select Board received from the Finance Committee in relations to the FY twenty-three budget. And the highlighting of, uh, their concern regarding the increase to the tax levy, uh, and some dialogue into how that might impact, uh, and put some, some limitations on, um, the increase to what we can ask for and/or the revenue that's available as part of the FY twenty-three budget process. So, uh, we anticipate there will be a joint meeting sometime in November between the School Committee, Select Board and Finance Committee. That kind of kicks off the budget process, which I anticipate there'll be definitely some more dialogue in regards to, um, both revenues and expenditures in relation to the FY twenty-three budget. So I'd say, uh, stay tuned for that. Um, the first item that, uh, is on your agenda for consideration are two budget transfers related to the FY twenty-two budget. Uh, the first one is the FY twenty-two general fund budget. It would be the first transfer, transfer related to the general fund for FY twenty-two. And this is, uh, there's approximately ten transfers that are being requested. And these are, uh, transfers specifically related to increases to salary lines, uh, related to administrators. Um, they were known going into the budget, um, or the beginning of the fiscal year, but not when the budget was developed. Um, and the last one is related to a, a one-to-one position that used to be in the preschool, but has now been transferred over to one of the schools. So now to move the funding, uh, to where that position actually is working. So, um, that would be the, uh, general fund budget transfer number one, uh, for consideration.
So any comments or questions for Tom on his preliminary remarks or the potential motion? All right, so I would love it if somebody would like to take the motion.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the School Committee approved. The budget transfer is outlined in the document titled FY twenty-two general fund budget transfer number one dated October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, we will move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me.
Thank you. The, uh, next item again is a budget transfer for the FY twenty-two budget. This is related to our grants and special revenues. This is the second revision for FY twenty-two. Um, there, uh, primarily the first four grants are just adjusting, uh, the appropriation within the lines. It is not recognizing or decreasing the amount of the grant. Um, there are two new grants that are at the bottom of the page. Uh, these are related to, they're new grants in FY twenty-two. Uh, they are related to the American Recovery Plan. And they are for special education services. So one is the American Rescue Plan IDEA. And the second is the American Rescue Plan IDEA Early Childhood. Uh, and they have a combined award of approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So the, uh, those two grants would be, uh, new to the FY twenty-two budget.
Thank you, Tom. We have a possible motion?
Move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the School Committee approved. The budget revision is outlined in the document titled FY twenty-two Grants and Special Revenues Revision Number Two, dated October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me. Back to you, Tom.
Thank you. Um, the next item is, uh, building use requests. There are two requests, uh, on your agenda. The first is from the National Multiple Scoliosis Society to hold a, uh, walk in May. Uh, May first of twenty twenty-two, they are requesting use of the high school cafeteria, uh, for registration, um, in bathroom facilities. Um, and because of, uh, the weekend use, it would require school committee approval and because of the number of participants, uh, that they anticipate that will be, uh, part of the walk.
Thank you, Tom. We have a possible motion.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the School Committee approved. The facility use request from the National Multiple Sclerosis Society as presented and dated October seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yeah. Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me.
The, uh, second request is from the, uh, Long Meadow Park Rec Department for the Youth Basketball Association. They are looking for weekend days. They are looking for weekend dates at uh Glenbrook Middle School, beginning in uh late November, running through March. And there are uh also dates associated to the Long Meadow High School. Um, and because one of those dates uh is up against the vacation period, it would require a school committee approval. So uh they're uh here for your consideration and there is a, an email that has the actual uh dates, the actual days. Of each month that they are looking for use.
We have a possible motion?
I move that the school committee approve the facility use requests from the Long Meadow Parks and Recreation. For youth basketball is presented and dated October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Gianna?
Thanks, Kevin. Tom, I was just wondering before the, is this like normal use pre-pandemic?
Yes, this would, uh, the dates for Glenbrook on Saturdays and the high school would be reflective of their utilization. Prior to the pandemic, they did not have a youth basketball uh season last year.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Alright, we'll move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me.
So the next item is our uh draft FY twenty-three capital project uh list. Um, I just wanna acknowledge Nick Gorgantus and his assistance in compiling the list and. Uh, some of the details associated with some of the needs we have out uh in our buildings associated to the physical plant. Um, so tonight we have six uh prioritized projects that we are proposing. Uh, for submission for funding as part of the FY twenty-three uh capital project program. Um, the first is for window replacement at Center School. Uh, and I'll just go through them and then go back and, and uh speak to them uh briefly. The second is for the uh replacement of the flat roofs at Center School. Uh, the third is for a uh freestanding uh. Handicapped accessible uh playground, playground apparatus for Blueberry. The fourth is for uh improvements to the grandstand and press box at the uh high school. The fifth is to install an island at the uh horseshoe at the high school at the exit. Forcing cars to turn left or right and preventing them from uh cutting across to the side street there. And the sixth is uh one that's been on our list for years, uh and I continue to advocate for funding for painting. Uh, in throughout the district, every building has uh needs associated to uh just updating. The painting both uh in common areas and in classrooms. So um, the, the dollar amounts associated to, to a number of these projects, specifically the windows uh at center and the roof. Replacement at center um are high. Uh, the windows are estimated at one point two million. And the roof, uh, I believe is just, just under a million dollars uh estimated. Um, acknowledging that, you know, they're both very high. Tickets that, you know, we, we most certainly would pursue every option in terms of funding. Uh, today in finance sub, uh Kevin, Kevin maybe mentioned looking at possible green communities uh funding for some of the windows to help. Reduce the loss of energy, um, and also considering a community preservation. Grant application for the playground apparatus at Blueberry. So we most certainly would uh, we would pursue. All possible funding options um for all of these, all of these possible projects. So I think uh I don't wanna forget the, the island at the high school possibly using the money from the parking fund. That has accumulated over the years to offset some of the costs. We're still working out um the possible cost associated with that project. So I'm happy to uh answer any other questions. Um, on, within the document also are other projects that are not prioritized. Uh, I did point out to finance sub and would, would mention again here tonight, the list associated. Uh, to both middle schools is growing every year. And every year we're, we're challenged with whether or not to move them up to the prioritized list or not. Um, and, and it's a really, it's a really difficult decision and we're obviously along, you are hopeful that we're successful in. Getting approval to the uh MSBA uh grant application process. Um, and then uh just on the last page would be the projects that were awarded funding. In prior years that are in uh various stages of completion and work, so. But again, I'm happy to answer any questions in regards to uh the projects.
Questions for Tom, and again, just a reminder that Nick is also uh on here and I'm sure Nick would be happy to, to chime in as well. Suzie, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Tom, and thank you, Nick, uh, for putting this together and I'm sure with input from the team and. A lot of thought put into identifying the, the priorities. It's um helpful. I wondered, um, how, is this the first time the window replacement has been on the list for capital projects?
I think it's been on the list, but not prioritized.
Okay.
It, it's been kind of in the center school list.
List, okay.
Prioritized projects. And I think uh the dollar amount has always been a, a challenge uh in terms of the cost, but. I think the pandemic, uh Nick, please jump in, but it really has highlighted how difficult it is to, to operate those windows.
Needing to keep them open and.
Opening, closing on and, and just the safety they, they come out of their sashes. So it's just. It most certainly has highlighted the challenge uh associated with uh the, the windows that are there currently.
You nailed it, Tom.
And similarly, um, I think that island, uh, the, number five has been on there before, or no? I, I'm, I remember us talking about it. Oh, I remember us talking about it with the, with the students as a priority for what they would like. To have seen tackled in the pre, in previous years.
I do, uh, Suzie, you're right. I think it was on the list, but not prioritized.
But not prioritizing.
This year was moved up into the prioritized list.
Okay. And then my last question, which is uh, the painting, um. And, and I don't. I guess my question would be, it, like, I always had the question in my previous job. I always got the question from the town. Well, isn't that a maintenance issue that should just be ongoing? Um, that, you know, that really isn't a capital project per se. Understanding that the cost of like, you know, a monumental painting project is, you know, cap, it has to be capitally approved. But um, just can you speak to that and what, what you're anticipating in terms of? How the town will look at that particular compo, that particular one?
Uh, the Capital Planning Committee here, I think, views it the same way that your district community did, that it's a maintenance. Challenge and not a capital issue. Uh, my response, and I've been able to perfect it over the years because it's been so many years we've been advocating for this, but. There's not enough funds in any maintenance budget across all the buildings to address the needs we have related to painting.
Right.
Um, and, and so, you know, we, the, the school committee a few years ago uh used some end-of-year funds to get. Uh, some painting done in each of the buildings, but it was barely scratched the surface of the needs and so. It, it just, it just seems like the, we fall behind every, uh, every year a little bit more than we were previously and so. Without some large infusion uh to address it, I just don't know that we'll ever be able to, to, to tackle this challenge through maintenance.
Agreed. I, I, I couldn't agree more. I think, you know, we're, you know. Our work is in buildings, have lots of walls and ceilings and, and such, so that need to be painted in corridors and all of that. So um, I couldn't agree more, but I, I just thought it was important to um bring up because it was kind of on the top of my mind. Ooh. That response is oftentimes, you know, well, that's just ordinary maintenance. Well, not when it is, you know, built, lots of buildings. Thank you.
Thanks, Suzie. Nick, did you wanna jump in and then talk a little bit about the window, windows at Center School?
Yeah, really, uh, what Tom said, it, it, you know, the, the pandemic really highlighted the need to operate the windows and. As we're operating the windows, we find that a lot of them are inoperable, in need of a ton of maintenance, um, broken in a lot of senses. And it, it just, it really highlighted the need to have those elevated and replaced.
Yeah, thank you, Nick. Appreciate that. And, and one thing that I'll, I'll throw out to the committee as well. So like every time we have an energy and sustainability meeting, the center windows come up. Because they are such a drag on our energy use. Um, and, and again, I don't think that we're gonna recoup a million dollars over the next couple of years, but. As energy prices continue to go up, it's crazy that we don't have energy efficient windows in one of our schools, so. Uh, thank you for putting that on the top of the list, Tom, because I think that's a huge need uh that we have in our, in our buildings. Suzie, go ahead.
And I think just to add to your argument, Kevin, the cost of, you know, replacing those windows will not go down. Right? It'll just continue to go up and up and up. And so, yeah, it makes sense to just put that at the forefront, especially. Now that we've recog, now that we've realized that there's, you know, really a need there.
Other comments or questions for Tom or Nick? Mary?
I'm just curious how things get prioritized, because as I look through the pages, there seem to be some other really big things. Um, that should probably be addressed also. So how do you decide which ones go at the top?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's a, it's a delicate process because there are a lot of needs. Um. We, we ask principals, uh, we send them out, uh, the twenty-two list and highlight the projects that were approved and then. Ask them if, are there any new projects they would like added and advocating to move up any projects and then. Uh, Nick and I and Superintendent sit down and kind of go through the requests from the principals. Uh, and based on the challenges that uh Nick sees on the buildings, obviously, safety is with. One of the highest priorities in terms of uh consideration, but also um. You know, investment that'll help prevent additional problems related to building uh maintenance. Uh, long-term care of the facilities, I think, is also up there and. Um, so I'd say we kind of break it down into those, those buckets in terms of prioritizing.
Thanks for the question, Mary. Uh, Marty, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's a really great question because the, the, the list is long. Um, the topics that Tom and Nick talk about are, are endless, but. When I think about what we prioritize, it falls into sort of the building envelopes and taking care of those because. You can take care of the envelope, you're taking care of the building itself and then safety and, and accessibility. Um, and I think the, particularly the uh, the interest in having accessible playgrounds is something that. Is important to all of us and so I think those are the things that, that, that I think tend to make it to the top of the list for us. Safety, accessibility, and then, and then the investing in the envelopes of the buildings.
Gianna, I think you are next.
Thanks, Kevin. I, I have four quick little things. Can I do them all, Kevin, or should I just, okay? Um, and thank you, Tom and Nick especially for uh all the effort on this. Definitely not my lane, so I hope that what I ask doesn't seem like I'm driving in your lane, because I'm not. Um. The, the freestanding flex glider playground. Um, are you all gonna look into like any, because it's, because it's handicap accessible, are you all gonna look into like any grants? Um, for, you know, children, families with disabilities that might help offset some of that cost?
We'd be happy to pursue any grant funding opportunity there are. I'd love to hear uh about that, Gianna. Not aware of it, but we most certainly would pursue that if there are opportunities available to, to support some of the funding for this.
Yeah, I'm just thinking there, there has to be something out there that supports financially, you know, or incentivizes. You know, the installation of, of handicap accessible playground appri, equipment, so. I, I don't know any specifics offhand, but I can definitely, you know, look into it. Um.
Sure, I can, I can talk with Jean Fontaine too to see if she knows of anything or maybe some SEAL representatives.
Yeah, awesome, thank you. Um, Nick or Tom, can one of you guys just talk a little bit? What's going on with the grandstand and press box? Like, what's the safety? What's this, what are the safety? What's going on there? Why does that need to be improved?
Sure, uh, it was a while ago that the structure was built. Uh, we've had to do some upkeep and maintenance on them and the Band-Aids. Are really uh not holding up the way that we'd like them to, so we wanna take down some of the stairs that we've been bandaging for years. And uh rebuild it structurally sound.
Okay, great, thanks for that.
I'm referring to the stairs that go up to the press box itself. Um, if you guys are ever walking by, by all means, take a gander.
Okay, thank you, Nick. And then um, I, I know the whole thing about, you know, I was shocked not to see any. Middle school stuff in the, in the top six priorities, but I get that, you know. Bigger picture there is, you know, a couple of years down the road, hopefully we'll be getting one or two new structures. Um, but Nick, I was just wondering about the Glenbrook. Um, when I see air, when I see the word air in anything, I automatically am just like, okay, why is that not a priority? So i- is there any, can you just offer some insight on that?
Sure. Are you referring to air handler updates?
Yeah, like what is, yes.
Yep, so um, obviously, those are all things that we need to move on in the middle schools, um, securing the envelope. Uh, upgrades to boilers, air handlers. Uh, the price tag with those projects is so large that we really are kind of in the wait-and-see phase. Of where SOI ends up.
Okay, thank you for that. And then the last one was, um. On, so Williams Down at the bottom, kind of before that Blueberry, it says the door lock replacement. Um. Oh, interior doors. Okay, thank you. I just, I just think answered it, because I, anytime I also see. Door locks, just because I work in a school myself, I'm like, alright, who's coming in, who's getting access? But that was interior, so sorry about that. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? We have a possible motion?
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approved that prioritized FY twenty-three capital projects list. Due to the town on November first, twenty twenty-one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes, yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me.
Thank you. Uh, the last item on your agenda under the finance subcommittee is uh. Consideration for approval of the Student Activities Sub Account List. So uh each year we try to bring to the school committee a list of subsidiary accounts that operate. Within the Student Activity Account in each of the schools. So you have the, the list from each school of what accounts they would be uh operating or are active. In their Student Activity Fund. Then at the bottom, uh, we would list any that we are inactivating uh based on no longer in use or needed.
So any comments or questions? Alright, we have a possible motion?
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee authorized the Student Activity Sub Accounts. As listed on the Long Meadow Student Activity Sub Account Authorization List, updated ten twenty-six, twenty twenty-one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me. Tom, we're good?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Policy Subcommittee. Do we have a report on the meeting that you just had?
Superintendent, do you wanna field that one?
For sure. Uh, the Policy Subcommittee met just prior to this meeting and uh main purpose was to consider. Uh, the potential for advertising on school grounds that is in response to the uh. Is in response to the, uh, town bylaw that was passed at a recent town meeting. Of permitting, uh, advertising on school grounds, uh, excuse me, on, on town-owned, uh, fields. Subject to review and approval by the, uh, uh, State Attorney General's Office. And so some, uh, good general discussion about, um, the potential for. Uh, advertising on fields under the purview, under the control of the school committee. Uh, so the, Subcommittee asked a lot of great questions that, um, will sort of steer our conversation if it goes forward. Relating to the revenue potential associated with this, relating to the types of signage, relating to the approval process, so. Uh, I think we came away understanding the complexity of the issue and. Um, I want to make sure I'm representing this correctly, so members of the Subcommittee correct me if I, if I'm, if I'm not, but I think the sense was to. Wait and see how this plays out on the town side and, and see, uh, if in fact the town bylaw is approved. And perhaps understand what the town's experience with this is and, and then go forward. So I hope, I hope that accurately captures the conversation. Is that fair? Yeah. And then, uh, the committee, it's the Subcommittee also had, uh, the school committee face mask policy. On its agenda, uh, it was a placeholder item in case the, uh, Department of Education. Made any movement with, uh, its mask requirement. It, it did, but it extended it to January fifteenth, so some general discussion about the, the face mask policy. Uh, we did have a, a few community members that participated in the, uh, public comment period of the Subcommittee expressing some. Um, concern about the, uh, requirement to, uh, have students in the preschool level, uh, wearing masks, so. Um, that's something that will, you know, I think we, uh, we reiterated this committee's commitment to, to keep that policy. On the agenda and to have it subject to regular review. That's it.
Any comments or questions for Policy Sub? All right, thanks, Marty. Thanks for the update. Uh, Curriculum Sub, it looks like the next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November second, so I'm assuming there is no. Update other than that?
Yeah, I think we'll have to, we have to go back to the drawing board to find a date for that. I think it didn't work for some of us, so we'll, uh. Diane, we could pull the members and see if we can pin that down.
Okay, so we will have a meeting at an unknown date.
Yeah.
All right, and no report from the Evaluation Subcommittee, so it looks like we are all set with.
One quick comment on the Evaluation Sub, uh, so, uh, the, we will need an Evaluation Subcommittee at some point soon to review. My annual plan, which is tied to the evaluation that the committee would do. And so we'll have to schedule that meeting to review that plan. Uh, my intention is to have that plan very tightly line up with the school committee goals, district goals, and then the emerging. Uh, school goals as well, so.
Thanks, Marty. Uh, any comments, questions on any of that? All right, I think we are to ongoing business, so Career Tech Enrollment Report, Marty, to you.
So I appreciate that the committee's, uh, really strong interest in the Career Tech program. I've had some really rich conversations with, um, several members of the committee. Uh, Career Tech is the program run by the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. Uh, it provides chapter seventy-four approved vocational experiences for our students. And, uh, I've included in your packet a sort of more general description of Career Tech. And a listing of the programs that are available to students at Career Tech, that the, uh, the Career Tech, the LPVC Building is located on. Uh, over on Brush Hill in West Springfield, and, uh, students who participate in Career Tech can participate in. Automotive technology, carpentry, cosmetology, culinary arts, early childhood, uh, building and property management. Graphic and visual design, help assisting, information support services, landscaping. Uh, slash horticulture, machine technology, and, uh, integrated occupational prep. So it's a, it's a rich program. Very up-to-date facilities. Uh, it provides a great opportunity for students that want to get a. A jumpstart on a, on a trade as a, as a potential career option for them. Uh, I've always been especially impressed by the, the machine, the precision machine technology program over on Brush Hill. Uh, very sophisticated machinery that is highly integrated with, um, computer technology and. Students coming out of that program in particular are, are well-prepared for it to jump right into the job market for. It's a very competitive and, and high-paying job, so, so I, I know that, um, I, I think it's, it's safe to say that this committee is, is really interested in. Uh, ensuring that we, um, are doing our part to advertise, promote. Make families, make students aware of the great opportunities that exist over there. And so, uh, I provided you with some data on historic enrollment. In nineteen students, uh, participating in the Career Tech program this year. Uh, which is the highest number in, in, in probably about ten years, only by a student or two, uh, so we haven't. We haven't really grown the enrollment over at LPVC. But I think a growth area for us is, um, starting freshmen over in Career Tech. Uh, we, um, the, the importance of having freshmen. Begin at Career Tech is, has increased, uh, partly because the requirements of some of those. Vocational programs has grown, uh, the, the hour requirements, uh, that come to us from D E C, the. Uh, the licensure, the certifications that students can potentially get. Really require a, a lengthy, in-depth experience for students, so. We're really interested in growing the number of ninth graders that have the opportunity to participate in Career Tech. This year, we have. Three, I think there's a fourth that is sort of, uh, jointly involved in the vocational program and some special education programming, so. Um, three or four students currently participating in Career Tech right now as ninth graders. And, uh, I think we all agree, there seems to be consensus that it's, um. You know, we want to make sure that our ninth graders understand that they can in fact, um, join Career Tech as ninth graders. And, and really get a head start on all the great offerings that they have over there. The, um. As a side note, um, not coincidentally, on Thursday, the LPVC Director. Uh, Mr. Roland Joyle and the Career Tech Principal, uh, Donald Jarvis are coming to Long Meadow to meet with. High school admin and counselors from the middle and high school to talk about, just to make sure that we are. Um, aware of any barriers or impediments. And that we're addressing any barriers and, and impediments to students enrolling in Career Tech. I think we. And again, I, I sense really strongly that this committee is, is really interested in making sure that our, our students. Have clear and easy access to those programs, and it totally fits with our interest in promoting sort of. Uh, rich, deep learning experiences for kids, authentic learning experiences for kids. Learning that happens, you know, not just on the, inside the four walls of our schools, but really goes beyond that, so. Uh, our intention is to, you know, take, to ensure that students have that, that free and unfettered access to. To Career Tech and, uh, and I think, you know, if we can grow the, the number of ninth graders that take advantage of it, I think that, that's a way to do it. It used to be that you could begin Career Tech as late as eleventh grade. Uh, that is no longer possible, given the, the hour requirements that are, are needed to go through their program, so. It's really important that kids get an earlier start in that Career Tech program, so. Uh, there are a number of, of sort of recruiting and promotional and marketing things that we do that I'm happy to talk about, but. You know, perhaps there's some ideas or thoughts that the committee has in terms, uh, on this, and. If you have any questions on the, on the program itself, do our best to answer. Um, the Executive Director Roland Joyle has. Indicated that if you wanted to, you know, extend the conversation, he said he'd be happy to join you at an upcoming meeting if it would be helpful, so. Uh, it's, it's a Career Tech update for you and, and, um, you know, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Comments or questions? Uh, let's go Mary and then Bronwyn.
So I think it would be a really wonderful opportunity if we were able to extend this to freshmen. I do wonder about graduation requirements for Long Meadow High School and how participation in, um. LPV E C's program would impact the academic requirements. Would, would we need to adjust to those? Is that something that? You're thinking down the road?
Yeah, I, I, you know, be- because we have had, uh, freshmen involved with the program, not in grade numbers, but we have had freshmen. Um, it's not really a challenge to help them meet their graduation requirements, but. I think we have to acknowledge that when students participate in Career Tech, they're devoting half of their, um. Half of their academic schedule to that opportunity. And so, you know, essentially, four of their blocks are. Assigned to that Career Tech, and then four of them are, are back at Long Meadow High School. They go on a half-day basis, so. So it's really, you know, kids are making some difficult choices, and it, it might be a challenge, let's say. Uh, to get in as much foreign languages as you might want to, um, but. There doesn't seem, I don't think the graduation requirements are a barrier, but. It definitely changes a child's experience. They get the advantage of the Career Tech program, but they have to. They have to make some tough choices in terms of what they might not be able to access, um, in the four remaining blocks that they have with us. During the time that they're, they're at Career Tech, so. But we get them through the requirements. We get them through P E, we get them through English, we get them to the, to the total credit, uh, numbers that they need.
Good, Mary. Uh, let's go Bronwyn and then Nicole.
Okay, thanks. Uh, I think this is really exciting that we are, um, taking a closer look at this. Um, the programs I've studied, uh, the sheet that Marty gave us, um. They're all amazing. I don't know if people have had a chance to go to the LPV E C. Might be fun to take a field trip there, school committee field trip. Um, but it, uh, it's. The things the, the students do there, it's, it's really amazing. Um, and I was just thinking. I know that we're gonna have, um, students from each school somehow or another. Give us some sort of presentations throughout the year. And I was wondering if we could add, uh, C-Tech to that, if it's not already on the list. Um, I didn't think of it initially, but, um, just thinking about it now, and a former district I taught in. A lot of the students would bring back pictures of things that they created, um, that were amazing. Um, I beaten at the bistro over there, which is delicious. It's like a formal restaurant. It's really, uh, they're very professional. Uh, they do an amazing job. And I think last year, the, maybe that was at the graphic arts department, they made some masks. For their students and staff, so it was a lot of hands-on activities. And I think just exposing our students more, um, maybe starting with the eighth graders. Just exposing them more to what the opportunities are at C-Tech. Just so they, you know, can discuss it with their parents and counselors and. Try to see if, you know, the hands-on learning is something that they're interested in. I don't think that it's. Um, Marty, if someone went for a year and let's say they decided it wasn't their, their thing. They're welcome to come back, you know, to Long Meadow at any time, right?
Hundred percent, yes.
Okay. I think that's a pretty big deal, just in case, um, kids felt like, oh, gosh, I don't want to commit to this four-year program, um, stuff like that. So I definitely support this. I think that, um, hopefully at the meeting on Thursday. Um, you guys will come up with like maybe an action plan for some type of recruiting. I just don't know if a lot of the students are. Fully aware of the opportunities over there, um. But I'm confident that the group meeting on Thursday will come up with a, a good action plan so that we can at least, um. You know, start trying to expose more, more students to it and just. You know, it might not happen in the first year or two or three, but just try to, um, get more kids. Um, to go there that really want to go there, that don't maybe know a lot about it yet. So, thank you.
Love the idea, Bronwyn, of, of showcasing, uh, some of their work at, at an upcoming school committee meeting. We'll, we'll, uh, we'll book that for sure.
Thanks, Bronwyn. Other comments or questions? Nicole, right, go ahead, Nicole.
Thank you. Um, thank you a lot for putting all the time and energy into bringing some information to us about C-Tech. And I love the idea, Bronwyn, of including, um, presentations for my C-Tech students in upcoming meetings. That would be wonderful to see the work they're doing. I'm wondering if you can speak at all to the challenges that the, um. Schedule arrangement at LHS might bring to participation in C-Tech. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, it's eight blocks that rotate, um, over several days. I know. So we have students at the high school where I teach who participate in C-Tech, but we have kind of four blocks that rotate in the morning. And then three blocks that are fixed in the afternoon, and so we have the opportunity to do AM or PM. How does that fit in? Is that a challenge to scheduling?
So the, 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 the high school, one of the, one of the features that was built into the high school schedule is that the, they have four blocks that rotate in the morning. And four that rotate in the afternoon, so, so A, B, C, D rotate before lunch and, and the others E, F, G, H rotate. After lunch, there's some overlap there, but it does allow, um, students to have designated blocks. Uh, A, B, C, D, or E, F, G, H to head over to Career Tech, so. Uh, there's enough stability in the schedule i- that it allows it. If this, if the, it's all eight blocks rotated throughout the day, then it would be nearly impossible to send students over there, but, uh. If, since they're going on a half-day basis, there's enough stability in the schedule to allow for it, yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you for clarifying. I know that's a question sometimes students have heading in for, towards the high school.
Yeah.
Other comments or questions? All right, thanks for the update, Marty. That was definitely helpful for us.
And, um, Diane, if you could help me make a note, I, I'd like to. Maybe in an upcoming superintendent's report, report back to you on some of the, some of the marketing and recruitment work that. We currently have underway and that ways that we can expand on that as well to, to get the program. So in front and center where it belongs, so, thank you.
Marty, do you want to just touch on the next agenda item? The district and community.
Yes, uh, in the process still of putting together the duties and composition of a, um. Sort of standing district, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion, uh, council or committee. And so just ask the committee to perhaps give me another, uh, at, at your next meeting, I'd love to, uh. Finish polishing that up and have it ready for prime time. It will be tied into, uh, my annual plan. And it's already a feature of something the school committee has asked for and, and our district improvement plan as well, so. Uh, we'll have that, we'll have that ready to go for you at your next meeting.
Thank you for the update, Marty. Any comments or questions on that one? Right, we're on to new business. Uh, the first item is tax ceiling task force representation. Uh, Select Ward reestablishing the tax ceiling task force. School committee is asked to appoint a representative to the task force, so, uh, I mentioned that in my chair report. And Jamie has kindly volunteered to serve in that role, so. Uh, Jamie will be there representing us, uh, at the meeting on Thursday, and, and if I'm not mistaken, Tom and Marty will also be there. For that meeting, am I right about that? Okay, so we'll have, uh, plenty of representation. And I expect we'll get updates, uh, regularly, so I don't think there's anything more we need to talk about now. Um, I don't know, Tom, Marty, anything that you guys want to add, or we'll just hear more after we have that meeting? Okay, excellent. Um, ethics disclosures, um, Marty, do you mind? Um, ethics disclosures. Um, Marty, do you mind just giving us uh an overview of this so we know what we're doing here?
Yes, uh, so this may, uh, if this seems familiar, it, it probably is. Annually, uh, Mr. Mazza and I bring to the committee a, as a procedural thing, a, a disclosure that relates to the fact that we each have an immediate family member that is employed in the district. And so you have uh two disclosures before you. One is, one simply needs to be uh acknowledged by the committee. Uh, and the other would need to be uh voted on. And specifically the one that would need to be voted on would be uh the committee's consideration in a vote to uh determine that the financial interest of the district that is disclosed on the form is not so substantial as to affect the integrity of services that Mr. Mazza and I uh offer the district. And so um, those are the two disclosures. We've filed these annually for the last probably five years, I think. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I included in your packet uh an opinion that we received from legal counsel uh on the importance of filing uh these disclosures. So if you have any questions, happy to answer those. And there are some possible motions associated with this.
Yeah, can I just kick things off by, there are two possible motions? Does that mean we do two of them related to you and then two of them related to Tom? So we have four motions that we're looking at here?
One for myself and one for Mr. Mazza. So the, there's, let me clarify, there's two disclosures that we each are making. The first is the section nineteen disclosure. And that is simply that we uh, that I have an immediate family member employed uh by the district and basically publicly announcing that and publicly announcing a commitment that wouldn't use that to secure any unwarranted privilege. The second disclosure is a sec, the section twenty-three form. And that is specifically relates to negotiations and the disclosure that um I have an immediate family member that is employed in the district and that it is a commitment not to um use that to, again, gain unwarranted privilege. On the section twenty-three disclosure, the committee would have to uh take a vote up or down to indicate whether or not it believes that the disclosure would affect the integrity of the services that we provide. So the section nineteen simply is a public acknowledgement, you're receiving it. Section twenty-three form requires a, a vote, a consideration by the committee. Does that make sense?
I guess I'm a little confused and Diane has her hand up. I'm confused because we have two possible motions, but I think Diane is going to clarify those for us.
Yeah, the first motion is your acknowledgement of the section nineteen and then the second one. Um, it actually is worded, these are the motions the lawyers gave years ago and I just copied and pasted. Says the first one accepts the filing of the conflict of interest disclosure form. And then the second one is the vote that there's no financial, no great financial interest. So the, the lawyers wrote it as two separate motions.
So, so again, what we need to do is to do two motions for Marty and two motions for Tom. Okay, so we just need to follow the script and do all of these motions. Okay, so before we uh go to the motions, are there questions or comments from Marty or Tom? Okay, so we have possible motions.
I move that the school committee accept the filing of Dr. O'Shea's conflict of interest disclosure form as required by Massachusetts general law, chapter two sixty-eight A, section twenty-three B three.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me. We have a next possible motion.
The school committee having reviewed the conflict of interest disclosure form filed with the school committee by Dr. O'Shea as required by Massachusetts general law, chapter two sixty-eight A, section nineteen. Having reviewed, I move that the school committee vote to determine that the financial interest disclosed on the form is not so substantial as to affect the integrity of the services to the municipality and that the chair be delegated the authority to execute the form.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We will move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me. Uh, Suzie, you want to keep rolling?
I move that the school committee accept the filing of Mr. Mazza's conflict of interest disclosure form as required by Massachusetts general law, chapter two sixty-eight A, section twenty-three B three.
We have a second.
Okay.
Any discussion? We will move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me. And the last possible motion.
The school committee having reviewed the conflict of interest disclosure form filed with the school committee by Mr. Mazza as required by Massachusetts general law, chapter two sixty-eight A, section nineteen. I move that the school committee vote to determine that the financial interest disclosed on the form is not so substantial as to affect the integrity of the services to the municipality and that the chair be delegated the authority to execute the form.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We will move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me. All right. It looks like we have moved to a possible motion to go to an executive session.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I don't, and, and Diane, you can tell me if this is um not allowed. May I request a short recess to um address some information that's come to light about a previous agenda item?
I, perhaps. Diane, are we, are we okay to do that?
I'd like to confer with the chair and the superintendent.
You can do a recess, but if you're discussing committee business? Are you just getting clarification on something?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's allowed.
Okay, like to get clarification.
So are you asking for a recess?
Yes.
Okay, so you're requesting a recess, which I assume requires a second. And then we will vote to recess and then we will come back and then do the motion to go to executive session. Or we will come back and discuss whatever we need to discuss.
Correct.
Everybody clear on what we're doing?
The second motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to recess. We have a second. Are there any discussion? All right, we will go to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me. And so we are, are in recess and I guess I just want to make sure logistically we know what we're doing in terms of Zoom.
I can put everybody in the wait room. Um, and then we can let them back out. And then you can go off and do your clarification.
Perfect, thank you Diane.
Thank you.
I don't know where Doug went. Tracy, are you able to count us back in?
Oh, is he in the waiting room?
I can count you back in. Um, but he's doing the um.
Oh, here he is. Okay, never mind.
Okay, if everybody's upset, I'll count you in. I'd like to call the school committee meeting back to order. And we're going to turn it over to Suzie Bell for an announcement of breaking news.
Um, information became available to us during the course of the meeting that um, that informed us that the Board of Health has changed the mask mandate for the public schools. That there is no longer a mask mandate, that there's a recommendation for the schools to mask. So I just wanted to, that was a point of clarification that I wanted to make with the chair and with the superintendent on protocol for how to address that in the course of the meeting, given that it was a previous agenda item.
Uh, thank you Suzie for bringing that to our attention. And uh, I'll just give you my take and then if Marty wants to give his take, that's great too. Uh, I think it's just consistent with what we talked about earlier in the meeting. It now becomes relevant if we want to have some flexibility that we get over eighty percent of the folks in the high school vaccinated. Uh, so that means we need more students to either be vaccinated or to let us know that they're vaccinated. And we need more staff to disclose that they are vaccinated. Again, the rough calculation is that until we get seventy-six more people vaccinated or attested to be vaccinated, we're not at eighty percent. And so we are unable to have any flexibility. Um, Marty, do you want to make any comments on that?
Yeah, I think you've said it well. I think you framed it well for uh consideration at your next meeting. And I'll gather some information on the specific language of the vote, if that matters. And, and we'll refresh and bring you the very best data that we have on the vaccination levels. And um, that will be, yeah, something that you'll, you'll be able to consider at your next meeting.
And, and my final thought is it would also be really helpful to know of the, the schools that have uh changed their mask policy, how have things gone? And, and maybe we'll have two weeks or so worth of information about how it's going at those other high schools. Any other comments or questions on that point? All right, Suzie, thank you for uh bringing that to our attention.
Thank you for your help with trying to figure out how to address that.
Yeah, I think we got it figured out. Excellent. Uh, and so I think we now are ready for a possible motion to go into executive session.
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, purpose two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, H. And purpose seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to not reconvene into open session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And again, just to reiterate, this is to not reconvene into open session. So this would end up adjourning the regular meeting. Uh, so we'll do a roll call vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me. Uh, thanks everybody for joining us. We will see you in two weeks.